Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for each person who sits on the council, for their gifts, their skills, their experiences, and the way that you have gifted them to lead. We ask that you would direct them today, direct their thoughts, their conversation, their speech. May it seek the well-being of the residents of the city and steward all of the things that you have given to us here in Perry. We thank you for all that you're doing in Perry, and we ask that you would bless the meeting tonight and the people here in Perry. We ask this all in Jesus' name, that the power of your Spirit. Ina?
Amen.
Thank you, Stacy.
Steve, are you going to help bring it in tonight? Are you going to help bring it tonight?
I am.
Do you have some candy?
Just try a little. Well, if you would give me one, just in case, I'll just have it here, doesn't matter what flavor.
Anybody else like it? If you're reading, let's keep your water.
Well, by my watch, it is 7:00 PM. So I will call the meeting to order. And let us begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Devin, would you do the roll call piece?
Mike Connel, Chad Holder, Mindy Gellwold-Bee, here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Corner.
Here.
Steve Walls.
Here.
Harrison Hammond.
Here.
All those come forward, except council members, Mike Connel and Chad Holder.
Mike and Chad both did let me know ahead of time that they were not going to be here tonight. Looking now for approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Those in favor of that motion from Steve, seconded by Bob, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now for reading and approval of the minutes of our August 4th meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the August 4th, 2022 regular meeting with the amendment to the discussion of ordinance number 363, nuisance abatement to be rewritten to say passed by roll call as opposed to all yes.
Second.
Was that Mindy?
Yes.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our pre-approved reports will be from Steve for the awards for tomorrow.
The winners of the Perry's Pride winner are Amber and Roger Hunt, 612 Launch Point Drive. Are they in attendance tonight?
I am. Come right up there.
Right up. I can see the award. My wife drove up, my wife and I drove around the neighborhood. Your place is just beautiful.
Oh, thank you so much. All right, look at me and smile. I have some beautiful hair. I'd like to give her a large hug.
Honorable mentions were Rick and Lisa Ackley, Karen DeCarlo, and Pat Aldrich. The winner of the Put Your Best Things Forward is Watson Brothers Funeral Home. Anyone here from Watson Brothers Funeral Home?
Thank you, Steve. I don't believe we have any other preapproved reports or presentations. So moving to public comment, is anyone here who would like to address the council? Come right forward. You're welcome to stand here if you'd like, or wherever you're comfortable.
Councilmember, Madam Mayor, my name is Mark Conne, right down here on Green Street.
Okay.
I am here to ask that you please look at some of the ordinances. They're old, they need revisited, the verbiage on them are ridiculous. I give examples of keeping of dogs. According to what you've got on file right now, if you have a kennel or your dog's out in public, that's the only way you need to clean up after them. But yet I have a neighbor that has four 70-pound dogs that can go out and defecate in their backyard and not be cleaned up after. And on 90, 95-degree days, when the guy next door decides to mow, you can only imagine what my backyard smells like. Barking of dogs. I know it says what it says in the ordinance, but you cannot tell me that it's okay for four dogs to bark and howl and scream and yelp and whine from 5:00 in the morning till 7:00, 7:30 in the morning, when the other person gets home from work. The people on the north of them, the people on the south of them, and the people across the street are just going buggy about this. They also have a swimming pool that they just erected in June. They filled it with Perry water, decided that that wasn't the way they want to go with it, so they drained it. And when you take 1,200 gallons of water and drain it downhill, it goes into my basement.
Twice.
Twice. And it also flooded Green Street. So we had a tanker truck come out and fill it back up. Didn't take care of it, didn't take care of it, didn't take care of it. And I had swarms of mosquitoes in my backyard and the smell of rotting scum water along with the rotting dog defecation in that yard. My backyard is...
You can't go in our backyard.
Can't go in the backyard, can't do anything in the backyard except mow it and gag the entire time you're doing it. So the second time he introduced the pool, he did it little by little. After I called the health department and the guy said, "There's not a rule that says he has to take care of it." He asked to pull a permit to erect it, but there's nothing on book that says he has to take care of it. There's something on book that says he can only have four dogs, and that's exactly how many he's got. But it doesn't say anything about cleaning up your own yard and little respect for your neighbors. Niceties have left three years ago when this guy first moved in, and I've made this complaint now for three years. It's fallen deaf on the chief of police. It's fallen deaf on Shane Hosnig, or however you say his name, the other police officer. I don't know, Shane Shaw, whatever his name is. It's fallen deaf on them ears. It has fallen deaf on Shattuck County Animal Control. It has fallen deaf on the health department. And I'm hoping that tonight it don't fall deaf on these ears. Something needs to be done. They need to be rewritten and reverbed because it makes no sense that they're allowed to get away with that.
We do appreciate, Mark, you coming and bringing that information to us. We have been reviewing, rewriting, and updating a lot of our ordinances. Larry Lambert is the chair of that committee. Steve sits on that committee, and so does Mindy and I as an ad hoc member. So that is one ordinance that we haven't gotten to yet, so we'll move that up.
Okay. And the only other thing I've got is the junk and debris in one's yard. This couple makes an order and decided they were going to put up a pool last year. And decided that they dug the hole for it and everything, decided, no, they're just not going to do that. So there's parts of a 20, I think it's, I believe it's a 24-foot round pool. There's parts of it laying all over the backyard. Liner, pieces, parts, everything, all over that backyard. There's construction parts from his deck erection. There's parts from his fence building, his deck building, all that. The backyard is just full of debris. And I know that because it attracts the mice. You can see it from my upstairs bedroom window.
Mice and snakes.
Mice and snakes. And I know there's all kinds of mice in there.
Is that the same neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have, honestly, when they first moved in, we thought, cool, young couple. We introduced ourselves to them because we were there six months, and we won the Perry Pride Award. I can't even get out in my yard. I was in the hospital for six weeks with COVID and almost died. I can't go outside because I can't breathe. We can't have air conditioning because it bothers me. So when we have our windows open and all of that smell comes in the house, it makes me sick. I can't even be in my yard that I love. It looks like crap this year. No pun intended. But I can't get outside because I can't.
Our home building has got a nice coating of mice droppings all over it, thus attracting feral cats that are living in a loft of my old building.
Help, we tried, we did, we talked to them, and they just told us to minor that thing business and go back into our...
I understand, the city can't do anything about it because 99% of this is a civil thing. I understand that.
Well, we do have an ordinance enforcement officer. He's on vacation.
He was down to bang the door, actually, and very boldly and sternly explained these to me, and that's why I'm here tonight. He told me that the only way that they have to clean up their animals, clean up after the animals, is if they're a kennel or if they are out in public.
Unless the ordinance is...
Is reworked.
So we will visit them.
Thank you.
Actually, we meet this next Thursday weekend today. Is there a next scheduled meeting? And I'll make certain those topics on our agenda.
The debris in the yard, the dogs.
And you guys can stop down anytime. I mean, I thought it'd be cool, they're a young couple, and it's just, no, we can't.
I miss that, and see, Mark.
Yes, Miss Porter, that's been over.
I told all the ordinance officer, I did not look at the ordinance off with it. So at least you, we got an answer now, we'll work on it.
Yep, and I appreciate it, so.
The ordinance meeting is our public. You're welcome either of both of you to attend. What time is that?
10:00 AM next Thursday morning.
Next Thursday morning.
Right in here.
Gotcha.
Well, thank you for listening.
You'll probably see my face again.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Is that property, is the backyard of that property?
Yes, ma'am, it is fenced in as of last year.
But you don't even come over and... You can't touch this fence.
I know the city can't do anything about it. I've got a lawyer hired for property lines. He had a psych survey done with Kevs and came out and did a complete land survey to verify where the property lines are. He don't agree with them, even though they're laser and satellite pinpointed agircy right there at the pin. He don't agree with it. So therefore, if I step onto my property over where he thinks the property line is, he's threatening me with calling the police and having trespassing charged on me. He's moved stakes to build the fence up. Part of his garage is on our property, part of his driveway is on our property. And there's no being nice to me. There's no being nice to this guy, none. So nice turns to not nice.
Well, I would definitely recommend you continue that pursuit because, as you mentioned, there's not anything we can do regarding that.
Yeah, I got, we're going to make an appointment with Kevs. We're going to make our own appointment.
Have a second, certainly done. From my years in real estate, I have seen two different real estate companies do surveys, and their lines don't match.
Yeah, we're...
Also, there's a difference between a stake-to-stake survey and a real estate survey.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, well, this needs to be a state-to-state survey to get rid of the encroachments. So, folks, I appreciate your help, I appreciate your time. Have a great week.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for hearing me.
You're welcome. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move into communications. I think Devin has some stuff for us.
Okay. Is it warm enough for everybody outside?
Beautiful.
Awesome, let's talk about Christmas then. Christmas fantasy. Mayor and us ladies in the office have been beginning on Christmas fantasy second Saturday of December, so that will be Saturday, December 10. Time is going to be same as last year, by 15:08. After reviewing the budget, because there was so much work done on cutting the budget, we've taken the time to assess logo promotion, and there will, there's a $3,000 budget to possibly use for Christmas fantasy. There should be no need to be using that much. But we wanted to know because John has come to us, and he's pretty confident that our lights that go up to the pole that we've been decorating, and this is the one we usually lit, is worried of putting them up because they're on their third or fourth year, that they're going to die. So he has places that he can use them, he's not getting rid of them, but he would like a new set. And so that's going to be probably $300 to $400 to get every pole back done. He also would like to do the trees again, and he would like to do just the trunks of the trees and just do white, and then after Christmas, they would stay throughout the winter and look nice. So reindeer are a little bit more expensive this year, and we only get one. And there are some stipulations that they have to follow at estate level. So the consensus was not to have reindeer this year. We divided all these different things up to kind of contact. At this point, there's still more to do. But at this point, fire department was reached out, and yes, they'll be the warning center. Raffle this year, which I think this is a nice twist. City won't be doing that at all, other than holding the items and being of assistance. It's going to be organized by Tom Margot and Mindy, helping them get raffle, organize it, manage the whole works. So we're excited about that. Meeting them Monday, took over some details. Santa and Christmas Claus, we were able to reach out with them, and there is a good chance, or they will be attending. That is another one that is changing up, which is really nice. Andy and Michelle Watkins will be the helpers for Santa. And they would like to be involved in the goodies that Santa gives out. So we're going to have a discussion with them. There is a $100 budget that is allowed, and what we hope Santa get. And so we're not sure how they want to contribute, but I love it that they're doing it. Again, that's something us girls who can help, and we help Santa help on that. So if they would like to, great. So we'll be contacting and reaching out to them. Fireworks again have been confirmed. If you recall, the wind canceled them last year, the first year we wanted to have them. But the people that we work with said we had a year to do them. Again, they've committed, that was $5,000. That was already paid for for those fireworks, so they're going to happen. In the contract, and I haven't gotten an amount of it though, the contract said there's a 10% additional display charge that could be charged to us. And so that's on the high end. He kind of hemmed and hawed, he's, so it's Nash, Nash Nursery. And there, he was literally like pulling, moving trees and all that kind of stuff when I talked to him. So he's like, I don't have the figures for you. But he kind of hemmed and hawed like, you know, don't worry, it's not going to be probably on the high end on that. But we'll report when we find out exactly. It's been verified with Guy Hubbard that Fire Engine will be in attendance because we always need the fire department involved. And then I just put a note, and I don't know if you noticed, sunset's at 5:03.
Okay.
Okay? Wagon, okay. So Scavenger Hunt has just been confirmed, that will happen again. Felicia is an employee of Dr. Micah, and it sounds like last year was her first year, and she thought it was a little confusing and kind of last minute. So she sort of began, she reached out to us, and is going to work on that. We had a follow-up meeting last year. I shared with her some of the comments of having the cars at different locations, whether that will do. She's going to hear, she's hearing it, she's going to go over it with Dr. Micah and see if there's any kind of changes I can do. But she is going to run it, she is going to do a flyer and get to the businesses, she's going to ask for donations. They're also going to be working with the painting of the windows. The mayor actually was able to get contact from the art teacher. And so today, an email was with Dr. Micah's office and Perry art teacher to coordinate them. So I don't know if you remember, the kids come out and they paint all the business windows that the businesses want this to be done. Amy Steiner, it was decided again. She did such a great job, we offered her first whether she wanted to do the free chili, and she said absolutely, that was fun. So we won't be doing a chili contest again this year. Amy's agreed to do that. A couple of things that we're still working on. The mayor, I know the meeting might not have happened. So the McQueen House has been revamped. And due to that, the Historical Society is politely asking that Santa Claus not be there. The traffic of Santa, what is bringing it, is the only thing. So the mayor's working on a possible location of the Perry United Methodist Church, but I know there's a meeting she's waiting to get to.
It's in September. The preliminary conversation I had with their chairman of their administrative council was favorable to allowing the church sanctuary to be used for Santa visits and as a warming center in the restrooms and the whole nine yards. But of course, that has to be approved by their council. So I'll attend that meeting and ask. And the Historical Society, not only because of the refurbishment of the building, but because it was so cold and windy last year, and there's just not that much space inside for people to wait to see Santa, and it was very crowded. I think we just tried to do too much in there on a year when it was windy. And we had a lot of people that had to stand outside in the cold and the wind and who just left because of that. So we'll do that differently, hopefully being able to use the church. We do have a second site in mind if, if for some reason we can't do that. But I think we can make that work.
And the last item that we have right now that we've been working on is the horse and wagon ride. And there's just a delay of getting an answer. Felicia from Dr. Micah's office said that she might be able to reach out and ask them if they are going to be able to sponsor that. We know there's a lot more to do, but we've been kind of breaking it up, trying to get this. We have, we're going to meet again and kind of all talk from where we're at on all this stuff and begin again because now we'll be reaching out probably to all the businesses. Any questions? Anything I should write down or anything like that?
We, the city council and Mindy, or not city council, but the city staff and Mindy, will be the ones communicating to the businesses about any donations they're going to make for the raffles or how their involvement will be. And that will keep, I think, communication open a little bit between the city and the businesses. So I think they enjoy the festivity of it and wanting to be involved. So I don't think there'll be any problem ahead.
So if there's nothing, no questions on that, the last communication. I just want to make sure that council, that you received an email from Mr. Liskin. You received that, that's all I have to say. We just want to make sure that communication got out to you guys. And one more question.
As far as mayor reports, I just wanted to let you know that the DPW did finish measuring the sidewalks. And we have 31,770 square feet of sidewalks. If we're able to get a grant to replace all those sidewalks, the total square footage of 31,770 multiplied by an estimate of $12 a square foot, which is what John Souter was using, would be 381,240. If by some miracle it was only $10 a square foot, then it would only be 317,700. So I have relayed that information to James Sisson, and he is going to flood that into a recognition. If he does need photos or any other information from John, he'll get that directly from you. And that's all I have, is a mayor report. Do we have committee reports?
I'll just reiterate that the ordinance committee is meeting a week from today, August 25th at 10:00 AM here in council chambers with a list of items, including our current burning ordinance has been under review, and we'll be discussing that along with a couple of other ones. And we obviously heard earlier this evening that we've got a couple of other new topics. We'll put on that agenda.
And then Larry, any other committees for reports? Looking for presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business on our agenda tonight, so moving into new business. Our first item is the invoice from Sherwin Industries Incorporated that John Souter presented. He's asking for this invoice to be approved, for work to be done to crack seal in the Perry Lake subdivision and other various areas around the city. Oh, it's excess used in country estates in various sites in the city. Thank you. I think you all have a copy of that. John is not here tonight, obviously. So if you do have questions about this that you'd really rather talk to him about first before we approve this, we can move it to our next meeting. I don't know what his timeframe is of trying to accomplish this. But I can't imagine that it's an urgent nature.
I move that we authorize payment to Sherwin Industries Incorporated for a amount not to exceed $3,162.50 for the rental and product to crack seal various streets.
Second.
So we have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob, to authorize this purchase. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is just a discussion. Last year, we had a nice employee appreciation dinner was held out at Glenbrier. Traditionally, that event has been the first Friday evening of the month of December. I asked Shirley to check to see if Glenbrier was available again this year, and they are. If we'd like to do that. And if we do want to do that, though, we just need to get that reservation made. So I'm bringing that to council to see if we want to approve that event again. Any discussion on that?
I think everybody enjoyed the evening, I know Lemon and I did. And I'd like to see if we can manage it and go ahead and proceed. I know we didn't have perfect attendance, but I think we had a pretty good turnout.
I think last year, based on if everyone, all the employees and staff and appoint that people and so on, if they all would have... the people and so on, if they all would have come with spouses, we would have spent one thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. With those that did attend, we spent seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. So I could, if you'd like me to have Shirley check with Glenbrier, get a better idea of what the cost is per plate. I know costs have gone up on everything. And once we get all that information, bring that back for recommendation as far as what you want to spend on the dinner.
I think that'd be proven to do myself, just to be sure.
I'll have her go ahead and reserve the evening, and we'll work these details out. If it just is out of our ability to do it financially, then we'll just cancel that. Okay. So we'll have Shirley get the details on that.
Should I put council agrees for mayor to proceed to reserve it?
Sure.
If you can.
Then we'll report back to council regarding the cost.
I'll take it off and then you can put it as you want.
Yeah.
If it's a possible approval.
Yep, that sounds good. Thank you. The next item on our new business agenda is a discussion regarding the possibility of forming a committee to discuss merging the police department of the city of Perry with the village of Morris. Kyle, I've talked to Kyle a couple times about options for financing the police department because our city budget is just so tight. And looking at the way that the fire department was able to be taken out of the city budget and made a separate entity, I researched just online and other municipalities as to how they finance their police departments. And there are a lot of them that are contracted services, just like CISA is a contracted service for the city of Perry and other municipalities. Their financing then is able to be done through a special assessment, just like our ambulance service and fire department services financed that way. So that's an option. We could form a combined police department and still have it financed through the city, but with more people, the households of Morris together with the households of Perry, it might make it more affordable. But those are all the things that need to be looked at and all the details that need to go into that because, of course, there are many. You know, do the, do the police departments and municipalities have similar goals? Do they have similar ordinances? Do they? I mean, there's just so much, you know, that has to be looked at. I was able to find a lot of information online. I did give the information I found to Bob Dickerson, the president at Morris. He did talk to the Morris Village Council, and they would like to form a committee to examine the possibility. And so I'm asking council, if you are interested also in doing that, are you interested in forming a committee to examine the possibility? In, in that same committee, I would think we would look at other options as well. So, open for discussion. Kyle is open for this. He has talked with the Morris police chief. He's open for that. And when Mike Connell called and told me that he could not attend tonight, I asked him what he thought because his background is emergency services. And he thought it was definitely worth looking at. And I asked him if he'd be willing to serve on the committee, and he said yes. So that's one person. Morris has suggested that Bob Dickerson, one of their council members, because Bob has told me that he's not going to run again for the first time in twenty-some years. And so himself, one of their council members whose last name is Scott, and then the police chief. So I was thinking if we had our police chief, a council member, and myself, that that might be a good start for a committee. But if anybody else of our council members are interested in being on that committee...
Interested, I'll apply.
I know you're so busy.
I'm interested also, but time constraints. How many times would they meet?
Well, I don't think this is an appendix. It's not like we've got to get it done tomorrow. You know, we can, I think, maybe get the initial meeting set up, the information gathering, sharing, talking, and decide, do we want to meet once a month? Do we want to meet? You know, how often will we do that?
I am interested.
Okay. So how about if we include Steve and Mike? Thank you, Steve. And, and then we'll go from there because it's not something that has to be done urgently. As a matter of fact, it's going to take a while.
It's going to take a while.
I mean, this is just some of the information that I've, I print stuff. Devin, Devin's, why don't you just save that on your computer? Because I like to read it like this, not, not.
I'm like you.
But anyway, there's a lot of places that have done things like this locally even, but out of state as well. So there's a lot of information out there. It'll take a while for us all to discern it, but. So I will set up a meeting and be in touch, and we'll go from there. If anyone from the public has information they'd like to contribute to that, please email it to me. You can go on our city website for that email address. Thank you.
So mayor, if I could just follow up with that. I just quoted that a committee, mayor formed a committee of county police chief, mayor, and Morris.
Together with the representatives from Morris for the committee.
They'll have their own committee, or do you want me to?
Will all be, yeah, will all be one committee. The three people from there and the four people from here.
Okay. So did, do you know their position?
Bob Dickerson is the president of the village council.
President of the village, the village president.
Mm-hmm.
And?
Mr. Scott, whose last, first name I don't know, is a council member.
I'll check, I'll check about their title, board member, and?
And then the chief, B-A-L-S.
I'm going to do titles, not names, and then I don't ask that.
Yep, yep.
Police chief.
And ours, our representatives are their police chief, myself, Steve, and Mike.
That's what I have. County police chief, mayor, boss.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Shawnee Tornado Siren Project. This is in process. I can report to you that I got in touch with American Tower representative who had been our contact person when we were negotiating that new lease and asked her to be in touch with Kyle and put him in touch with whoever he needed to talk to about whether we could rent the tower, not rent the tower, use the tower. I did, prior to that, email Justin, our attorney, and asked him what our rights were to the tower, and he said, not really very much because American Tower rents the whole tower and the ground underneath it. But if they're willing to let it be used because it's not going to interfere with what they have up there, and it only weighs 20 pounds, and it's a good thing to do, then terrific. So that's what Kyle is talking to this representative from American Tower about doing. And the person he talked to, Kyle said, was very excited about that. He thought it was great. But he has to talk to somebody else, who will probably have to talk to several people. But as soon as Kyle gets word, they'll let us know, and then we can go from there. So we'll just have to do a no action taken on this until we have more information back from Kyle. And then our next item, discussion of a new siren. Again, we just don't know anything yet. They were here Monday. They did do some maintenance. They did sound the sirens a couple times. But we don't have a recommendation or any kind of report yet as to what was done or what might be recommended to make them better heard.
They did sound a lot?
Yes, once.
I didn't hear.
I was, I was in here. I barely heard it. I came out and I said, is there a siren going on? And Shirley and Devin said, yeah. And I went, wow. I just, I really am.
It sounded like it was sick. I really was like.
So again, we'll have to just do no action taken on this item until we have more information. So now we are to the possible first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number 365.
Terminal.
If you would. I move that the zoning ordinance amendment number 365 regarding medical marijuana provisioning center retailer, and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry will date Perry ordains. The city of Perry zoning ordinance is amended by deleting sections 3.31 and 3.32 in their entirety and replacing the same with the following section 3.31 and section 3.32. Inserting in their stead and by amending table 8.02, section 2.14, and section 15.07 as follows. A, section 3.31, marijuana provisioning center retailer. This section shall apply to all medical marijuana provisioning centers, adult use, recreational parentheses, marijuana retailers proposed to be established after the effective date of this ordinance. A, medical marijuana provisioning centers, adult use, recreational marijuana retailers shall be commenced, conducted, operated, and utilized in accordance with the established city of Perry zoning and qualified ordinances, and in compliance with the MMFLA, MMMA, MRTMA, MTA, and applicable state and federal laws. B, proof of absurdity bond in the amount of fifty thousand dollars with the city listed as the abogee to guarantee performance by applicant of the terms, conditions, and obligations of this chapter in a manner and certainty approved by the civil or city attorney or in the creation of an escrow account as follows. One, the account must be provided by a state or federally regulated financial institution or other financial institution. And the account must be for the benefit of the city to guarantee performance by licensee in compliance with this chapter and applicable law. And three, the account must be in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and in a form prescribed by the city attorney. C, consumption of marijuana in any public place within the city of Perry is prohibited except as provided by state law. D, no medical marijuana provisioning center, adult use, recreational marijuana retailer shall permit the sale, consumption, or serving of alcohol. B, section 3.32, marijuana establishment. No marijuana establishments shall be commenced, operated, or utilized in any zoning district on or from any property within the city of Perry except for medical marijuana provisioning centers, adult use, recreational marijuana retailers, as designated in section 3.31. C, Perry City zoning ordinance, chapter eight, section 8.02, table of uses, be amended to repeal the use of medical marijuana dispensary and replace the following. Table 8.02, table of uses for commercial districts. Use, medical marijuana provisioning center, adult use, recreational marijuana retailers. No, a single location will serve as both a medical marijuana provisioning center and a marijuana retailer. Commercial business district, no.
Not permitted.
Not permitted, excuse me. B1, special land use, mixed special land use. D, Perry City zoning ordinance, section 2.14, definitions. M shall be amended to insert the following definition after manufactured home space and before master plan. Marijuana adult use recreational retailer. Marijuana adult use recreational retailer means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that purchases marijuana from a grower or processor and sells supplies or provides marijuana to a qualifying adult, as defined in the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCLA 333.27951, SQUEE. E, Perry City zoning ordinance, section 2.14, definitions. M shall be amended to insert the following definition after marijuana adult use recreational retailer and before marina. Marijuana establishment. Marijuana establishment means a marijuana grower, marijuana safety compliance facility, marijuana processor, marijuana microbusiness, marijuana retailer, marijuana secure transporter, marijuana provisioning center, or any type, other type of marijuana-related business licensed by the state of Michigan. F, Perry City zoning ordinance, section 2.14, definitions. M shall be amended to insert the following definition after master plan and before migrant agricultural labor housing. Medical marijuana provisioning center. Medical marijuana provisioning center means a commercial or business entity located in the city that is licensed or approved to operate by the state pursuant to the MMFLA and is licensed by the city that sells supplies or provides marijuana to a registered qualifying patients only, as permitted by the state law. Medical marijuana provisioning center, as defined in the MMMA, MMFLA, and MTA, includes any commercial property or business where marijuana is sold in conformance with the state law and regulation. A non-commercial or non-business location used by a primary caregiver to assist a qualifying patient, as defined in the MMMA, MMFLA, or MTA, connected to the caregiver through the state's marijuana registration process in accordance with the MMMA, MMFLA, or MTA, is not a medical marijuana provisioning center for purposes of this chapter. MMFLA means the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.270, SQUEE, as amended from time to time. MMA means the Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421, SQUEE, as amended from time to time.
MRTMA means the...
MRTMA means the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCL 333.27951, et cetera, as amended from time to time. MTA means the Marijuana Tracking Act, MCL 333.27901, et cetera, as amended from time to time. G, Perry City zoning ordinance, section 15.07, specific standards shall be amended to insert the following definition after EE. Wireless communication towers. FF, medical marijuana provisioning centers, marijuana adult use recreational retailers. One, medical marijuana provisioning centers, marijuana adult use recreational retailers shall be located within a permanent building as defined by section 2.03. Two, no medical marijuana provisioning center, marijuana adult use recreational retailer shall be located within 1,000 feet of a public school or library. This distance shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest property line to the parcel of land upon which the proposed medical marijuana provisioning center is to be located to the nearest boundary of public school, property, or public library. Three, medical marijuana provisioning centers, marijuana adult use recreational retailers shall not be expanded or improved in any manner requiring a building permit without first applying for and receiving the approval of the city of Perry zoning administrator, planning commission, and the city of Perry council. Four, medical marijuana provisioning centers, marijuana adult use recreational retailers are not permitted in A1, R1A, R1B, RT, RM, PUD, NFO, MHP, CBD, I1, or I2. Medical marijuana provisioning centers, marijuana adult use recreational retailers are permitted in B1 and mixed. Five, parking requirements for one parking space per 300 square feet of usable retail floor area in accordance with section 13.05. Six, buildings must be constructed in a manner that provides unobstructed visibility to all areas of the building and parking lots. Seven, if the site of what's a residential district, screening shall be provided along that property line. Grass plant materials and sight obscuring fences or walls of an appropriate type approved by the planning commission and in accordance with section 13.03 shall be placed within the water strip. Eight, any sign or signs shall comply with the requirements of this ordinance and be approved at the discretion of the planning commission. Nine, hours of operation are limited to Monday through Sunday 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Ten, outdoor lighting shall be dark sky compliant and sufficient to illuminate all sides of the building without creating a nuisance or surrounding properties or roadways. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from date of publication.
We have a motion by Steve Second from Larry to place zoning ordinance amendment 365 on the next agenda for possible adoption. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So Devin, if you'll place that on the agenda. Now we'll move to our next item, possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 366 regarding medical slash retail marijuana.
I move that the ordinance amendment number 366 regarding medical marijuana provisioning center slash retailer and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. City of Perry ordains. The city of Perry codified ordinance concerning marijuana establishments, chapter 860, shall be and is hereby amended as follows. Chapter 860 is to be hereby repealed and a below revised chapter 860 is substituted in its place instead. Chapter 860 marijuana. 860.01 marijuana establishments. Cross references, possession's use and transportation of marijuana see general offense 622.01. 860.01 marijuana establishments. Except as provided in this chapter, all marijuana establishments are prohibited within the boundaries of the city of Perry. No marijuana establishment shall be commenced, operated, or utilized in any zoning district on or from any property within the city of Perry except for medical marijuana provisioning centers, adult use recreational marijuana retailers as designated in chapter 860.02. 860.02 purpose. A, is the intent of this chapter to authorize the establishment of one medical marijuana provisioning center slash adult use recreational marijuana retailer. Note, a single location shall serve as both medical marijuana provisioning center and a marijuana retailer in the city of Perry and provide for the adoption of reasonable restrictions to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community at large, retain the character of neighborhoods, and mitigate potential impacts on surrounding properties and persons. It is also the intent of this chapter to affirm that the city of Perry is upholding its prohibition of all other marijuana establishments other than those specifically authorized by this chapter. It is also the intent of this chapter to help defray administrative and enforcement costs associated with the operation of a marijuana facility in the city through the imposition of an annual nonrefundable fee as defined by resolution of the city council on each medical marijuana facility licensee. Authority for the enactment of these provisions is set forth in Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101, et cetera, and the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCLA 333.27951, et cetera. Further, the city does not intend that permitting and regulation under this chapter be construed as finding that such facilities complied with any law. B, the city of Perry considered it necessary and pertinent to authorize the establishment of one medical marijuana provisioning center slash adult use recreational marijuana retailer through a limited application period and subsequent lottery system drawing to be specified by a resolution of the city council at the time such application period and lottery shall occur. C, nothing in this chapter is intended to grant immunity from criminal or civil prosecution, penalty, or sanction from the cultivation, manufacture, possession, use, sale, or distribution of marijuana in any form that is not in compliance with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, initiated law 1 of 2008, MCL 333.26421, et cetera, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101, et cetera, the Marijuana Tracking Act, MCL 333.27901, et cetera, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCL 333.27951, et cetera, and all other applicable rules promulgated by the state of Michigan. D, as the effective date of this chapter, marijuana remains classified as a Schedule I controlled substance under the Federal Controlled Substance Act, 21 U.S.C., section 801, et cetera, which makes it unlawful to manufacture, distribute, or dispense marijuana or possess marijuana with the intent to manufacture, distribute, or dispense marijuana. Nothing in this chapter is intended to grant immunity from any civil prosecution under federal laws. E, all medical marijuana slash adult use recreational marijuana facility license holders must comply with all state building codes, including but not limited to plumbing, mechanical, electrical, building energy, and fire codes, which includes the city zoning ordinance as applicable under law. 860.03, definitions. The purpose of this chapter, for, excuse me, for purposes of this chapter. A, any term defined by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421, et cetera, shall have the definition given in the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. B, any term defined by the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101, et cetera, shall have the definition given in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. C, any term defined by the Marijuana Tracking Act, MCL 333.27901, et cetera, shall have the definition given in the Marijuana Tracking Act. D, any term defined by the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCLA 333.27951, et cetera, shall have the definition given in the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. E, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. Conditional license means a document endorsed by the city which only recognizes that an entity or person has submitted a valid application to the city seeking to own and operate a business related to and regulated by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Act and the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act and has been selected as the winner of the city's application selection lottery process. A conditional license grants no authority to possess, sell, market, or deal marijuana in any fashion, whether for retail trade, personal, and/or patient medical use. Designated consumption establishment means a business license that allows a consumption of marijuana within their premises. Designated consumption establishment licenses these are prohibited from distributing or selling marijuana or marijuana products within the premises. Grower means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in this state that cultivates, drives, trims, or cures, and packages marijuana for sale to a processor or provisioning center. License means a permit authorized by the city conveying authority to an entity or person to own and operate a business related to and regulated by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. Licensee means a person holding a state operating license issued under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL 333.27101, et cetera. Marijuana or marijuana means that term, means that term is defined in the Public Health Code, MCLA 333.1101, et cetera, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MMMA, MCLA 333.26421, et cetera, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MMFLA, MCLA 333.27101, et cetera, and the Marijuana Tracking Act, MTA, MCLA 333.27901, et cetera, and the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MRTMA, MCLA 333.27951, et cetera. Marijuana event organizer means a licensee that is permitted to organize marijuana events such as cannabis conferences and cannabis competition events. Marijuana can be sold and distributed during such events. Marijuana facility means an enterprise at a specific location in which a licensee is licensed to operate under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCLA 333.271, et cetera, and the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCLA 333.27951, et cetera, including marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana provisioning center, marijuana retailer, marijuana secure transporter, or marijuana safety compliance facility. The term does not include or apply to a primary caregiver or caregiver as that term is defined in the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCLA 333.26421, et cetera. Marijuana microbusiness means a licensee that is allowed to cultivate, process, and sell marijuana. Licensees can cultivate a maximum 150 cannabis plants but cannot purchase mature plants or processed marijuana products to augment their products. Medical slash adult use recreational marijuana establishment license means a valid medical slash adult use recreational marijuana establishment license issued by the city pursuant to the provisions of this chapter and state law. Municipal license means a license issued by a municipality pursuant to the MMFLA that allows a person to operate a marijuana establishment in that municipality. Persons means an individual, corporation, limited liability company, partnership, limited partnership, limited liability partnership, limited liability, limited partnership, trust, or other legal entity. Processor means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in Michigan, excuse me, located in Michigan that purchases marijuana from a grower and extracts resin from marijuana or creates a marijuana-infused product for the sale and transfer in package form to a provisioning center. Provisioning center means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that purchases marijuana from a grower or processor and sells supplies or provides marijuana to registered qualifying patients directly or through the patient's registered primary caregivers. Provisioning center includes any commercial property where marijuana is sold or retail to registered qualifying patients or registered primary caregivers. A non-commercial location used by a primary caregiver to assist a qualifying patient connected to the caregiver in accordance with Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421, et cetera, is not a provisioning center for purposes of this chapter. Retailer means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that purchases marijuana from a grower or processor and sells supplies or provides marijuana to qualifying adult as defined in the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCLA 333.27951, et cetera. Safety compliance facility means a licensee that is a commercial entity that receives marijuana from a marijuana facility or registered primary caregiver, tests it for contaminants and other tetrahydrocannabinol and other cannabinoids, returns the test results, and may return the marijuana to the marijuana facility. Secure transporter means a licensee that is a commercial entity located in this state that stores marijuana and transports marijuana between marijuana facilities for a fee. State license means a license issued by the department that allows a person to operate a medical marijuana establishment within the state. 860.04, authorization of facilities and fee. A, the maximum number of each type of medical slash adult recreational marijuana facility allowed in the city shall be as follows. Facility grower prohibited, processor prohibited, provisioning center slash retailer, one, note, a single location will serve as both a medical marijuana provisioning center and a marijuana retailer. Marijuana microbusiness prohibited, safety compliance facility prohibited, secure transporter prohibited, marijuana event organizer prohibited, designated consumption establishment prohibited. B, city council shall review the number of facilities allowed at one-year mark of implementation to reevaluate and determine if number allowed needs to be adjusted. From that point on, every three years, city council shall review the maximum number of each type of marijuana facility allowed and determine whether this maximum number shall be changed. The review and its findings shall be recorded in the minutes of the relevant meeting of the city council. C, a nonrefundable fee shall be paid at the time of licensee renewal by each marijuana facility licensed under this chapter in an annual amount as set by resolution of the city council. A single provisioning center slash retailer license shall be awarded by a lottery. An application fee of $5,000 shall be paid in full at the time that each application is submitted. Application shall be accepted for a 30-day calendar period to be determined by city council resolution. All applicants with fully completed applications received within the application period will be entered into a lottery drawing on the day previously set by city council resolution. will be entered into a lottery drawing on the day previously set by city council resolution and shall be open to the public. After the city council's review and approval of the lottery results, the winner will be awarded a conditional provisioning center license and move forward in the formal licensing and approval process. The first and second runners-up shall maintain their lottery rankings as in the event the winner is unable to complete the overall approval process within the approved period of time. All other applicants in the lottery will receive a refund of $2,500 within 30 days of the lottery completion. Should the first or second runners-up elect to withdraw at any time from the lottery, excuse me, any time after the lottery is conducted, it will be refunded $2,500 within 30 days after their written withdrawal is confirmed in writing to the city clerk. E, should a provisioning center retailer licensee be vacated or revoked, the city shall hold the lottery to award the license to another applicant. The process shall mimic the steps outlined above but would be limited to the number of vacated or revoked licenses available. Anyone want to take over?
Sure, I will, Larry. 860.05, general location and operational requirements. A, medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishments shall be prohibited from being licensed located on any parcel or lot within a residential zoning district as indicated on the city zoning map at the time of license application. The entire parcel or lot upon which a medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishment is located shall be zoned for medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishments. One, medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishments shall be prohibited from being licensed and located within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any grades from 1 through 12. This distance shall be measured from the lot or parcel property line boundary of any school described above to the lot or parcel property line boundary of the medical marijuana slash retailer establishment property at their closest points. Two, medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishments shall be prohibited from being licensed and located within 1,000 feet of a public library. This distance shall be measured from the lot or parcel property line boundary of any public library to the lot or parcel property line boundary of the medical slash retail marijuana establishment property at their closest point. Three, all marijuana shall be contained within the principal building and within an enclosed locked facility in accordance with the MMFLA and MRTMA as applicable. Four, marijuana establishment hours and days of operation may be limited by the city's zoning ordinance as a condition of license approval. The establishment premises shall be open to the city for inspection during all licensed hours of operation. Five, licensees shall report any other change in the information required by this chapter to the city clerk prior to the implementation of the proposed change. Failure to do so may result in suspension or revocation of the license. Six, licensees shall provide to the city any change to the medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishment that require reporting to LARA, L-A-R-A, under the requirements of PA 281. B, provisioning center slash retailer location and operational requirements. One, consumption of marijuana shall be prohibited on the premises of a provisioning center slash retailer, and a sign shall be posted on the premises indicating that consumption is prohibited on the premises. Two, provisioning centers slash retailers shall continuously monitor the entire premises on which they operate with surveillance systems that include security cameras and alarms. The establishment's point of contact keyholder must respond promptly on-site to any alarms. The video recordings shall be maintained in a secure off-site location for a period of at least 30 days. Video recordings must be made available to law enforcement upon request if a possible crime is involved. Three, unless permitted by the MMMA, the MMFLA, and the MRTMA or applicable state law, public or common areas of the provisioning center slash retailer shall be separated from restricted or non-public areas of the provisioning center slash retailer by a permanent barrier. Unless permitted by the MMMA, the MMFLA, and the MRTMA or applicable state law, no marijuana is permitted to be stored, displayed, or transferred in an area accessible to the general public. Four, all marijuana storage areas within the provisioning center slash retailer must be separated from any customer slash patient areas by a permanent barrier. Unless permitted by the MMMA, the MMFLA, and the MRTMA or applicable state law, no marijuana is permitted to be stored in an area accessible by the general public or registered customers slash patients. Marijuana may be displayed in a sales area only if permitted by the MMMA or the MMFLA or the MRTMA. Five, provisioning center slash retailer hours of operation open to the public shall be limited to between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. Provisioning center slash retailer hours, excuse me, of operation open to the public may be limited further as a condition of license approval. C, a non-refundable annual fee shall be paid by each marijuana establishment licensed under this chapter in an amount as set by the city council and as listed in the city's fee schedule. I'm done.
Eight six zero point zero six, requirements and procedure for issuing license. A, no person shall operate a marijuana facility within the city without a valid marijuana facility license issued by the city pursuant to the provisions of this chapter and state law. B, the license requirement in this chapter applies to all facilities, whether operated for profit or not for profit. C, every applicant for a license must op, oop, sorry, licensed to operate a marijuana facility shall file an application in the clerk's office upon a form provided by the city. The information required for the application shall not impose qualifications for the issuance of a medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishment license that conflict with the MMFLA, MRTMA, or rules pro-
Obligated.
Obligated, thank you, by the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, CRA. A complete application for the license required under this, this chapter shall be made under oath and shall include all of the following information and any required attachments listed on the form. One, business information, including the name, physical address, and personal number or numbers, zoning district, mailing address, if different from the physical address, phone number, building area, number of employees, and stated hours of operation. Two, applicant information, including the name, address, phone number, email, and date of birth of the highest level official or employee of the establishment to serve as the city's point of contact. This includes a copy of the applicant's state or federally issued photo identification and the applicant's state of Michigan prequalification status letter. Three, operator information. If different from the applicant, the applicant information shall be provided for, for the individual or individuals responsible for the day-to-day operation. License information concerns if the applicant and/or operator has been denied an application or license for the marijuana establishment in any other jurisdiction and, and the reason why, or if the applicant and/or the operator has had a marijuana establishment license suspended or revoked in any other jurisdiction and the reasons why. And the subsequent business activity or occupation of applicant and/or operator subsequent to such action of suspension or revocation. Five, property owner information, including the name, primary resident address, phone number, real property interest in the medical slash adult-use recreational marijuana establishment, and all the tenants and their legal interests described in detail. This includes proof of own, proof of ownership, or a copy of the lease at the premises to be purchased by the applicant, proof of an executed purchase agreement contingent on approval of for desired use. If the premises are leased written permission from the owner of the premises for the medical slash adult recreational marijuana establishment shall be included. Six, facility information, including the status of an alarm system with the alarm company name and contact information included. Required facility information includes the following. I, proof of insurance for the fire damage and the amount of the value of the premises and liability insurance with the minimum limits of $500,000, listing the city as an additional insurer. II, description of storage facilities for all marijuana to be stored on site. III, description of the security plan for the facility, including but not limited to lighting, alarms, barriers, recording, and monitoring devices and security guard arrangements. IV, copy of special use permit application submitted in accordance with the zoning ordinance. V, a list of any medical, I'm sorry, any material safety data sheets for all nutrients, pesticides, and other chemicals proposed for the use in the facility. VI, description and plan of all equipment and methods proposed to stop any impact to adjacent uses, including enforceable assurances that no odor will be detected from outside of the establishment property. VII, a plan for the disposal of any marijuana and related byproducts proposed to be used in the establishment. VII, statement providing information regarding any other marijuana establishment slash facility licenses that the applicant and/or operator is authorized to operate in any other jurisdiction within the state or another state and the applicant's involvement with each establishment slash facility. Seven, proof of insurance policy. I, proof of insurance policy covering each license and the naming, and naming the city its elected and appointed officials, employees, and agents as additional insured parties available for the payment of any damages arising out of an act or omission of the applicant or its stakeholders, agents, employees, or subcontractors, in the amount of, one, at least $1 million for property damage, two, at least $1 million for injury to one person, and, three, at least $2 million for injury to two or more persons resulting from the same occurrence. II, the insurance policy underwriter must have a minimum AM best company insurance ranking of B+, consistent with the state law. The policy shall provide the city, that the city shall be notified by the insurance carrier through today's in advance of any cancellation. The insurer must be licensed in the state of Michigan. Eight, proof of a surety bond in the amount of $50,000 with the city listed as an oblique to guarantee performance by applicant of the terms, conditions, and obligations of this chapter in the manner and surety approved by the city attorney or in the creation of an escrow account as follows. One, the account must be provided by a state or federally regulated financial institution or other financial institution. Two, and the account must be for the benefit of the city to guarantee performance by licensee in compliance with this chapter and applicable law. Three, the account must be in the amount of $20,000 and in a form prescribed by the city attorney. Nine, oath of application provided on the application form. Ten, release of liability, indemnification, and waiver provided on the application form. Eleven, application shall be contained, shall contain a clause regarding each applicant granted a license under this chapter to indemnify, indemnify, and hold harmless the city, its officers, agents, employees, and servants from all claims, suits, and actions of every name, kind, and description brought by the applicant for or on account of damage, damages resulting from litigation pending, current, or future due to the denial or revocation of a license guaranteed hereunder or any other loss or cost, including and not limited to that caused by the concurrent active or passive negligence of the city, its officers, agents, employees, insurance resulting from granting or denial of a license under this chapter. D, applications to operate any marijuana facility shall include a photocopy of the state, of the state of Michigan prequalification status letter. Any application delivered to the city without the aforementioned prequalification status letter will be deemed incomplete and shall be rejected. Any delay due to the filling or filing or an incomplete application shall be deemed the fault of the applicant and not the city. E, upon the applicant's completion of said form and furnishing of all required information and documentation, city staff shall receive the application and assign it to a, sign it a unique application identifier based on the date and time of receipt. The city staff shall act to approve or deny an application as fully compliant no later than five business days from the date of application when received. F, applicants, applicants receipt of a confidential license from the city shall provide for reasonable time, but not more than 12 months to secure any and all subsequent and/or collateral permits as required by the state and/or city. Any applicant with a conditional licensee that licenses that the city, that has not completed every task as required by the state and/or the city, 12 months after receipt of the conditional license from the city will result in the revocation of the applicant's city-issued conditional license and denial of the license. One, an extension of time may be granted upon the applicant's written request and showing a good cause for delay. A request for the next, for an extension of any time shall also include this estimated, estimated time to remedy or the delay. Any extension of time shall be at the sole discretion of the city. G, within 20 business days from the applicant submitting proof of obtaining all or other required permits and approval and payment of the license fee, city staff shall approve or deny the marijuana facility license. H, maintaining a valid marijuana facility license issued by the state is a condition for the issuance and maintenance of the marijuana facility license under this chapter and continued operation of any marijuana facility. Anybody else want to take over?
Yeah, I'll take over. I, a marijuana facility license issued under this chapter is exclusive to the licensee and facility location and may be transferable or relocated if all of the following are met. One, the licensee submits to the city clerk a written request to transfer license or relocate indicating the current licensee location and the proposed licensee location slash location. Two, the proposed location slash proposed licensee meets all of the conditions for obtaining a license under this chapter. Three, proposed licensee or current licensee with new location delivers the application Proposed licensee or current licensee with new location delivers the application fee in full as required by Perry City Ordinance eight six zero point zero four D. Four. Proposed licensee or current licensee with new location submits a complete license application as required by this chapter and- Five. As soon as reasonably possible after the city clerk is in receipt of the aforementioned items, licensees' request to transfer a license issued under this chapter to a different location or individual or entity shall be reviewed by council. At the sole discretion and satisfaction of the council, the transfer shall be approved by resolution. After council's resolution granting the approval, transfer or relocation will not be completed until all state requirements are fulfilled. The attempted transfer, sale, or other conveyance of an interest in a license without resolution approving transfer by council is grounds for suspension or revocation of the license. Eight six zero point zero seven, license renewal. A. A marijuana facility license shall be valid for one year from the date of issuance unless revoked as provided by law. B. A valid marijuana facility license may be renewed on an annual basis by submitting an application and payment of the annual license fee. Application to renew a marijuana facility license shall be filed at least 30 days prior to the date of its expiration. C. Applications for renewal or amendment of existing permits shall be reviewed and granted or denied before applications for new permits are considered. Eight six zero point zero eight, applicability. The provisions of this chapter shall be applicable to all persons and facilities described herein while the operations or activities associated with a marijuana facility were established without authorization before the effective date of this chapter. Eight six zero point zero nine, severability. In the event that any one or more sections, provisions, phrases, or words in this chapter shall be found to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect the validity or the enforceability of the remaining sections, provisions, phrases, or words of this chapter. Eight point six zero point nine nine, felony. A. Any person who violates any of the provisions of this chapter shall be responsible for a municipal civil infraction. Each day a violation of this chapter continues to exist constitutes a separate violation. A violator of this chapter shall also be subject to additional, to such additional sanctions, remedies, and judicial orders as are authorized under Michigan law. B. A violation of this chapter is deemed to be a nuisance per se. In addition to any other remedy available by law, the city may bring an action for an injunction or other process against a person to restrain, prevent, or evade any violation of this chapter. C. This chapter shall be enforced and administered by the city official as may be designated from time to time by resolution of the city council. Actions to address a violation of this chapter are detailed in section two zero two point nine nine of the city's codified ordinances. D. A license issued under this chapter may be suspended or revoked for any of the following reasons or violations, excuse me. One. Any person required to be named on the permit application is convicted of or found responsible for violating any provision of this chapter. Two. A permit application contains any misrepresentation or admission of any material fact or false or misleading information or the applicant has provided the city with any other false or misleading information related to the facility. Three. Any person required to be named on the permit application is convicted of a crime which, if it had occurred prior to this middle of the application, could have been cause for denial of the permit application. Four. Marijuana is suspended on the business premises in violation of this chapter or any other applicable state or local law, rule, or regulation. Five. Facility is operated or is operating in violation of the specifications of the permit application, any conditions of approval by the city, or any other applicable state or local law, rule, or regulation. Six. The city, the county, or any other governmental entity with jurisdiction has closed the facility temporarily or permanently or has issued any sanction for failure to comply with health and safety provisions of this chapter or other applicable state or local laws relating to public health and safety. Seven. Facility is determined by the city to have become a public nuisance. Eight. The facility's state operating license has been suspended or revoked. Nine. An offensive order is determined to be emanating from the facility. City official confirmation of condition required. E. Possession, sale, or consumption of any form of alcohol is strictly prohibited in any licensed medical marijuana facilities. This order shall take effect 30 days from the date of publication.
Second. We have a motion by Larry, read by all, seconded by Bob, that the Ordinance Amendment three sixty-six is to be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, all of you, not only for reading but for all the work that was done to prepare these ordinances. Thank you, all of you. So Devin, if you would, please place that on our next agenda as well. Any other business that may come before council at this time? Do we have any other public comment? Items for our next agenda would be, as we already mentioned, with the two ordinances for possible adoption, for the discussion of a new siren, for finding out the status of the Chiawasi County Tornado Siren Project, and perhaps, I'll just give a status report on the formation of the committee. Anything else that we should have on our agenda?
Go ahead, Karen.
The question mark, depending on our ordinance submitting this week, possibly first reading of a, or, excuse me, I've got to back up, we're going to have to do it to Justin first, so probably not this next agenda, the burning ordinance.
Okay. And I'll also report if we have the information about the dinner. Appreciation, if we have that information.
I would like to have a discussion about perhaps hiring a parks director because with Sasa, I don't have time to do all the things as park committee.
Okay.
I think it would be, who, let's maybe have some of the part-time anyways, I could devote time to doing the research that we need to. And then also I asked Tim to give a Sasa report.
Oh, good. Tim and you?
If he may give me the information, I'll report it, I'd just-
And is that going to be at our next meeting?
Yes.
I might just add to your discussion about a parks director that our ordinance enforcement officer used to be connected to the Owasso Parks, and I'm not sure if he was the director or a manager or something, but he did work for them, so we might look into that. Well, it's been a good night. I think we've accomplished a lot. Thank you all again for being here. It's eight thirty-five and this meeting is adjourned.